Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 5th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Murfreesboro. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight, barely. We're pushing it a little bit. And before we get into the minutes here, I do want to acknowledge we have some members from the leadership Rutherford. How many do we have here?
Two.
Tonight. Ah, the rest of them are going to come for a longer meeting. They're going to stay till like midnight with us one night. You were very smart, very smart to join us tonight. So, welcome, welcome. First thing we need to do is approve the minutes of the September 7th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. So moved?
Second.
Question and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have one public hearing tonight, and this will be for a zoning application for approximately 10.1 acres located at 694 and 708 West Thompson Lane to be rezoned from RS-15 to PRD Cherry Blossom Downs. And BA Homes LLC is the applicant. And Mr. Blomley's going to report on this one for us tonight since Ms. Green is on fall break.
Yes, ma'am. I will do my best to fill in for Ms. Green on this application that she's put in all the work on. So, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Our one public hearing tonight is for a rezoning request located along the north side of West Thompson Lane, just to the east of the Tuscany Development. You'll see it's the area in the light blue shading on the map in front of you. 10.1 acres, it consists of two large, single-family residential parcels, each containing an existing single-family residence on them, addressed as 694 and 708 West Thompson Lane. The applicant is proposing to rezone these two parcels as part of one development from RS-15, their zoned, single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet right now. And he's proposing to rezone them to PRD Planned Residential District for the specific development plan contained in the Cherry Blossom Downs PRD Pattern Book, which is included in the agenda materials you have before you, and for which Mr. Taylor with SEC will be giving you a brief presentation momentarily. The request, and I'll go over a couple of the specifics of the development, is for a single-family attached zero-lot line development. Each of the proposed 52 units will be on its own separate lot of record, a minimum of 5,200 square feet. Each home, after it's constructed, there'll be two units attached. After they're constructed, the lots will be re-subdivided down the firewall separating the two attached units, so that each unit will be on its own lot of record. So, each person will not only own the structure, the dwelling, but also they will own their front yard, their backyard, and the yard on one side of their home. I always joke that this is the decor and belt model that they popularized in the 90s and early aughts, as they say. The request, as I mentioned, is for a PRD. Mr. Taylor will go over the amenities and the architecture momentarily. Just a little bit about the surrounding land uses. Directly across the street is the North Side Baptist Church. Directly to the west of the subject property is the Tuscany Development. You'll see Cortona Way and Quanti Circle, that's Tuscany. And where it says Red Keep Lane and King's Drive, that is a part of the King's Landing PRD that is currently under development. King's Landing was approved for both single-family residential detached lots as well as town home development. The lots that front along Leanna Road to the west are all single-family residential large lots, and are, many of which are located in the unincorporated county. And further to the north is the city's Jordan Farm property that's used for the spraying of repurified water. A couple of things that I wanted to go over with you tonight before Mr. Taylor gives his presentation. First of all, there are a number of exceptions that the Pattern Book identifies, and we're trying to make sure that whenever we have a planned development that has proposed exceptions, that we outline those for you in the meeting, so that you're aware of those exceptions that you will be acting on. The first one is the reduction of the, one of the minimum required front setbacks for corner lots from 35 feet to 15 feet. And so, this is not the front setback where the garage will be located, but kind of at the secondary front setback, if you will. They're proposing to reduce to 15 feet. The second exception is the reduction to the front setback from 35 feet to 25 feet for two of the lots, lots 27 and 28. So, that means that a total of four units, because each of these lots will be subdivided, each containing two units. So, a total of four units will have a 25-foot front setback instead of a 35-foot front setback. Number three, the reduction to the rear setback from 20 feet to 15 feet for lots 27 and 28. Those are the shallow lots that are at the north end of the development. And just for frame of reference, I should have prefaced this by saying, we're comparing this to the RSA Type 1 Bulk Zoning District, which is the zoning district that most approximates the type of development that they are proposing. Also, for lots 27 and 28, the reduction to the required off-street parking spaces from four spaces to two spaces. These are the driveway spaces. Since they'll only have front setbacks of 25 feet on these lots, there will only be room for the parking of two vehicles side by side and not four vehicles, two and two. Number five, the reduction in the minimum required open space from 20%. And number six, a reduction in the minimum required 50-foot right-of-way with 33 feet of pavement for zero-lot line developments to allow 42-foot rights-of-way and 24 feet of pavement. Now, what the zoning ordinance does say is that the reduced right-of-way width and pavement width can be approved if the Planning Commission determines that there is ample off-street parking or sufficient off-street parking. So, the way that Mr. Burns and Mr. Taylor have attempted to address that is to provide for the four spaces in the driveway for each home except for those lots 27 and 28. And also, there is a guest parking area in the amenity lot. So, that's how they have attempted to address that concern. I believe they've also narrowed that pavement width in an attempt to slow traffic, because it is, while it's not a straight street, it is pretty close to being a straight street. There's some slight curvature to it, and I think they're hoping that that narrower pavement width will slow traffic a bit going down that proposed street. The adopted future land use map, I have it on the screen before you. It shows the property recommends a suburban residential land use character, which is primarily single-family residential detached lots with a maximum density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. And the proposed density is a little over five, and all of these are single-family attached dwelling units. So, the proposed zoning request is not consistent with the adopted future land use map. Now, the adopted future land use map does allow for smaller lots if they're clustered with an abundance of open space. And in this instance, that is not the case. It's not really a cluster development with open space predominantly around that cluster. It's a standard, single-family attached zero-lot line development. So, it's staff's opinion that it's not, the request is not consistent with the adopted future land use map. And the proposed future land use map recommends an auto-urban residential land use character for the property, which is a density of four to 12 dwelling units per acre. The density of this development is consistent with the proposed future land use map. However, the proposed characteristics of the auto-urban residential land use character recommend that single-family residential detached be the primary land use type, or the primary land use with single-family residential attached as a secondary land use. And all of the dwelling units in this development are single-family residential attached. So, the proposed PRD is not consistent with the recommendations of the auto-urban residential land use character of the proposed future land use map update. There were a list of things that we asked you to consider when deliberating on this item. We'd like the Planning Commission to consider the following items in its review of the request. That the proposed development type and characteristics are inconsistent with the adopted Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map. And that the proposed development type and characteristics are inconsistent with the proposed update to the Future Land Use Map and Comprehensive Plan. Number three, the developer proposes, really to utilize one elevation in the development. At the Planning Commission workshop back on September 21st, there was discussion by the Planning Commission of providing more than one elevation and more than one color. The applicant has provided basically two variations of the same elevation, each in four different colors. It's basically the same elevation with some design modifications, kind of some decorative design modifications to make the elevations vary, but it's essentially the same elevation. And so, it's staff's opinion that they did not comply with the request of the Planning Commission at the workshop meeting in providing more than one elevation. It's just variations on the same elevation. Also, there was discussion about enhanced side elevations for the corner lots. The Pattern Book does not include enhanced side elevations for the corner lots, nor does it include a commitment to having enhanced elevations for the corner lots that will be visible to public streets. Number five, the existing tree line along the western boundary, there was a commitment made by the developer to preserve the existing vegetation at the neighborhood meeting along that western property line. And there's some language that's been included in the Pattern Book about the preservation of the existing vegetation along that western property line. However, staff has reviewed the language and does not feel that it is sufficient. It says that the existing vegetation will be preserved where applicable, and we're not really sure what where applicable means. And also, we, there is not really any information in the Pattern Book detailing how the proposed construction of the infrastructure in the homes on the lots on the west side of the main road will impact their ability to preserve that existing tree line. And finally, the Planning Commission should consider the appropriateness of the exceptions that are a part of the PRD. And I outlined all of those exceptions to you earlier. At any rate, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the request. Mr. Taylor is here, and he has a PowerPoint presentation that he would like to make.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Ms. Chairlady Jones, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Brian Burns, the applicant, with me tonight. We do have a brief presentation of what we've called Cherry Blossom Downs, as Mr. Blomley briefly went over a few details. As Mr. Blomley said, we're about 10 acres. We're on the north side of Thompson Lane, just to the east of Tuscany and to the west of King's Landing, which is currently under construction. And all of that is just to the east of Leanna Road, which is in the dark blue running up and down the screen here. We do currently have two parcels that are included as part of this development, which we will combine with this project. This site is directly across the street from North Side Baptist Church. Today, the properties are zoned RS-15, which was a holdover from when they were annexed. To our west, we have a PRD in Tuscany, and to the east, the PRD of King's Landing, and then to the north, the unincorporated RM, which is still in the county. Both parcels do have existing homes. This is the eastern home, the western home. Both of those will be removed with this project. Here's an example home inside of Tuscany. We do not have any example homes in King's Landing, since those roads are still being constructed. This is looking west along Thompson Lane, so our project will be to the right of this picture. The church will be directly to the left. And then, this is looking back the opposite way. So, the church is to the right, our project to the left. The plan itself, we have proposed for a PRD to allow for 52 dwellings. That gives us a density of right at 5.15 units per acre, which we feel like fits very well with the area and blends with Tuscany, which is right at five units per acre, and King's Landing, which is 5.2 units per acre. We think this product blends well between those two, with Tuscany being all detached and there being townhomes directly abutting us in King's Landing. So, we think this is a good transitional-type home and subdivision. We have proposed for just over an acre of open space that is split between the front and the rear of the property. We will have a mandatory HOA, which will be managed by a third-party association that will manage those common spaces and enforce our restrictive covenants. All of our streets here will be public streets, will have sidewalks on both sides. We've worked very closely with city staff to add curvature to the road, act as a speed deterrent, instead of having a long straight run like the property to the east. And of course, we will have underground utilities all throughout this project. The homes themselves will all be constructed of high-quality brick, stone, cement, board, siding. They'll start at a minimum of 1,450 square feet in size. They'll all be one-story. Almost all of our homes will have enough room in the driveway except for the four cars, except for those two units at the northeast corner of the project. All of our homes will have two-car garages. We've planned for all the homes to have patios and fenced-in backyards. And all of our homes will have at least 50% open space in the front setback. And then, each home will have a landscape package with yard trees in the front yard, as well as shrubbery between the driveways. Worked closely with staff on that as well. The homes themselves, we have made revisions since Planning Commission. We've added more detail, added dormers, added trellises. So, they do read as different elevations, although they might be the same footprint, they will read as separate elevations. So, we've added different colors and details. You'll see trellises over garages. You'll see decorative garage doors. You'll see corbels, and you'll see dormers. So, we will swap those up. We've also got a variation of colors and color schemes, nice shutters. So, we've got these all throughout. So, it will not read as the same house as you drive through, which is the entire point of having different elevations. You want it to look like different homes. And so, you can do that with colors, you can do that with materials, you can do that with details. And then, we also went in and enhanced the side elevations that will face the public streets, extra windows, extra detail on these sides. And then, we do have a water table around all sides of all homes. We have tried to create a streetscape as soon as you come in off of Thompson Lane. We've got an abundance of landscaping planned along Thompson, along both sides as you come in, as well as entry signage. That streetscape will continue throughout the development with our sidewalks and our yard trees. We've also worked very closely with staff, because our detention is at the front, to screen the detention ponds. And so, we didn't have to look very far. We looked to our neighbor to the west in Tuscany. This, you're looking directly at their stormwater pond. This is directly taken from Thompson Lane. So, you can see, you don't even know it's a pond unless you know it's a pond. And so, we've turned a very functional item into an aesthetically pleasing and attractive feature on-site. So, we know how to do this, we've done it, we'll do it here as well. This is another example of how we provided aesthetic treatment to the rear pond inside of Tuscany. So, again, it's a functional area, but it's not ugly. The amenities themselves are all focused toward the rear of the project. We tried to pick amenities that were geared toward our clientele, which we think is going to be that 55-plus age range. And so, we picked active features, but low energy. And so, things like pavilions, fire pits, bocce ball, cornhole, and just outdoor seating. So, all things that are social in nature, that will bring the residents together to create a community. We do have two points of access with this project. The main one of those will be on Thompson Lane, here in red. The other will be from King's Landing, here in red. And then, we've also provided a stub to the west here that will eventually connect into Leanna Road to try to keep people off of Thompson Lane. Our connection onto Thompson Lane, we will construct a right-turn lane into our development. King's Landing has committed with their construction plans to install a left-turn lane that will connect to Tuscany, as well as along their frontage. We have committed that if they are not completed with that or under construction with that, would we make our connection, that we'll take that liability and obligation on. And again, our streetscape starts along Thompson Lane. Landscaping is important to us during a neighborhood meeting. We heard it's important to the residents of Tuscany. And so, we've committed inside the booklet, along that shared property line, to maintain those trees. Now, will there be some trees that possibly die? Yes, and that's exactly what we said in the neighborhood meeting. But we also said, we will replace any trees that die, and we've committed to that inside the book. And so, we will do a tree survey during construction plan review, so we know what trees are there and where they're at, so we can be held accountable for that. We did the exact same thing with Tuscany, except on the opposite side of the property. Obviously, we did a pretty good job maintaining the tree roll on this side of the property as well. And this is a picture of those trees. This is actually looking across Tuscany's rear detention pond at those trees, that shared property line there. And then, I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing. As far as the exceptions go, that is for one lot. It's the one denoted with a blue dot in the book or a blue X here on the screen, and that's purely due to where the street comes in back there. We just couldn't physically meet that obligation. But we do have plenty of visitor parking planned directly beside of it. And so, felt like that was a reasonable expectation, and that's kind of how we've approached that in the past. But it is only that one building, those two homes, in the future. And all of those exceptions that were discussed just about had to do with the location of where that street came in.
Yeah, and I misspoke earlier. It is just that it's the two units on the one lot, so 27 and 28 are, it's not, sometimes when we have these developments, it's, you look here, one lot, and it's two lots in the future. So, yeah, it's two units that will have those exceptions, not four units.
So, on those two, the 27 and 28, how many cars will fit in the driveway on those?
So, two cars in each driveway, and then, we'll have a two-car garage with that.
So, two in the garage, two in the driveway?
Yes, ma'am. And then, it's directly beside of the visitor parking at this location.
Other questions, comments before we? I'm going to go ahead and state right now that, and I know we'll all have more comments later, but I'm not excited about this development right now. I don't think that we saw, I mean, next to any changes from what we saw a few weeks ago and asked for elevation changes. This is not anything like I've ever seen, when you would want to see two different elevations or four different elevations. I don't think adding shutters changes an elevation, adding, changing the color from white to gray or dark gray, and I don't think that changes the elevation. I didn't, I'm not overly pleased with the elevation to begin with. I told you, Mr. Burns, you've got some really nice projects here in our city that we are all very proud of. And I just don't even think this begins to live up to what you've done for us in the city before. And I'm really, really struggling with what to do with this project, because I don't have anything really positive to think about it right now.
Brian Burns of BA Homes. I had a week to do it. I tried my best to do, we did more than just add a trellis. We had, there's another elevation more. I met with Mr. McKnight, and we added another, I don't know what you'd call it, a false dormer, a false pitch over that. We took that one and put a dormer with it, and then, we took the old one and put a dormer with it. We took one and put a trellis on it. I don't, I didn't want them so different that this one sticks out from this one. I wanted to keep some sort of consistency, but I understood you guys wanted, you want it to look nice, and I want it to look nice. I've stated here every time I've ever been here, if I can't drive by in 20 years and be proud of it, I don't want to build it. This development will be just as nice as any other development I've built. It's sometimes hard to put on paper how you can make a one-story building look nice. It's not like General's Landing or even Hidden Rivers, where I got two- and three-story buildings that are tall, and you're doing all this stone and stuff. These are really meant to be craftsman-style. The landscaping is going to be very detailed on them.
But you've done some really nice craftsman-style, one-story, same level. Maybe there was an upstairs in there, but it didn't look like it. But you've done some really nice craftsman-style in the city already with a lot more detail and just a lot more character than what we're looking at right here, so.
I think it's more detailed than you see on paper. I think when you drive by it and if you pass it, if you drive by it and two years, you'll be like, he was right. It looks good. I pride myself on never bringing something here that ever embarrasses you guys, where somebody calls you and three years ago, why in the world would you pass that? I've never once ever tried to put you guys in that position, at least on a quality issue. I mean, there's people that don't like traffic, or they don't like other things. One of the things I can dictate, I've tried to always provide you guys with something that you don't have to answer to somebody else later on while you pass something. And I think this will be very nice also. I just think sometimes on paper, it's hard to dictate a one-story building. You can't really see all the dimensions and stuff on it sometimes. I can.
I do agree the roof pitch is probably part of the problem, but you know, there's just lots of little things, and we can wait and go down all the details.
I also want to, I want to make these where they're semi-affordable. I mean, there's nothing that's affordable anymore. That word, I guess, has just gone by the wayside, but you know, I don't want them to be $500,000, $600,000 units. I want them to be, I guess, in today's world, this is affordable, is high threes for the small one and mid-fours for the big one. These are going to be units that people my age, 10 years from now, will move into probably. And that's, at General's Landing, these are the end units, it was from General's Landing, and those entire units were bought by, with the exception of one person had a. and those entire units were bought by, with the exception of one person had a handicapped child. Every unit was bought with somebody that was 60 to 90, and I think that's who will be in here. I didn't put an age restriction on it because I didn't want to, if the economy just goes horrible, I don't want to be handcuffed to an age restriction. But that's usually who buys these.
After you drove through the other developments, I believe the one that's on Pershing, Pershing, is that correct?
Pershing, yes, that's General's Landing.
That's yours?
Yes, ma'am.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Drove up and down through all those streets today.
These units are all over there. It's just that they're, you know, you've got, you've got the big tall units beside them.
Two of them all side by side. I think that's the difference. There's a lot of variety over there. It's just a very nice-looking development.
I will make this nice, too. Sometimes I just have to come here and say, trust me a little bit, I don't build ugly stuff. I pride myself on that. I'm not the guy that's coming in here and builds starter homes. That's not what I do. There's some great builders here in town that do that. It's just not what I do. So I'm here if you guys got questions.
Any other comments, questions before we open the public hearing? Hear what everybody else has to say. Okay, we will open the public hearing. You've been here before, you know that you have three minutes to come up and speak. Tell us your thoughts about this project. You'll start by giving us your name and your address. Make all your comments to the planning commission, please, not to the developer or other people out in the audience. And that's basically the gist of it. Anybody, we will open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak for or against this item.
Hey, good evening. I'm Deborah Betancourt. I live at 3405 Cortona Way in Tuscany. I'd like to say thank you to the city. I see a gentleman here that was there at the neighborhood meeting. I appreciate the planning commission and the role that you play. I've been a citizen here in Murfreesboro. I was, I went to school in Murfreesboro and returned here. It's a beautiful community. I'd like to keep it that way. My concern is not with development. I think we are in a city that has been discovered, and development will continue. My concern is that we are proposing a facility that will, you know, by the planning commission's own work, there are six exceptions and the setback lines, and I don't pretend to understand all of what you do to establish those. But I feel like the planning commission has done work to establish standards for our community, and I'd like to see us uphold those. The fact that we are considering setbacks and standards that fall below that threshold and certainly fall below the proposed future of Murfreesboro is a concern for me. The traffic is a concern for me, and I understand that this development is not responsible for traffic, but I do believe as a resident who backs up to Thompson Lane, you know, my home was on one of those photos, the traffic, there probably should be a traffic light either at Leanna Road or Segal Road for the safety of our community. And I know that traffic study is something that would be incumbent upon the state to perform, but I think it's incumbent perhaps upon the city of Murfreesboro to go from two driveways that probably handled four cars to suddenly 52 homes and potentially 104 vehicles that are going to be coming and going. It's difficult to get out of Tuscany today when church is going on. It's difficult when Segal School is in session, and that is a concern. And I appreciate the role that you play in keeping us in a thriving, beautiful, wonderful community to live in. I am a little bit embarrassed with the view of Thompson Lane. In today's world, there are a number of homes, beautiful homes, but there are rows and rows and rows of roofs that we're looking at. And it concerns me to see another not single-family home that is being addressed. It's also a little bit concerning to me that Mr. Taylor, who represents a company, refers to this as "we" when he's referring to Tuscany. And I understand that he was a part of Tuscany with Landmark Homes who built that subdivision. I happened to have bought a home there. It's beautiful, single-family homes. These are what I refer to as duplex. And the "we" in that, that Mr. Taylor is referring to is, you know, the company that he represents partnering with a different builder. And the neighborhood is not the same from what I've seen on paper. And I understand that paper is one thing. If we have 20% open space that we are aspiring to as a community for the city of Murfreesboro, then let's stick with that standard that you have all done work to establish. And if we have setback lines, let's stick with that standard. The number, you know, the 35 to 15-foot setback on a corner lot, I think there are five corner lots, if I, you know, understand a corner. I think there are five of those, and that's almost 10% of the homes in that. And those are being cut by 57% based on the numbers I saw. So I appreciate you, I appreciate what you do. I hope that you will consider this development and do the right thing for the city of Murfreesboro as you make that approval and those decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ben.
Hi, my name is Michelle Bass. I live at 3509 Keonte Circle. My home faces the tree line that was discussed in your packet, I think that he shows. I am mostly opposed to this request because I do not understand the language about keeping the tree line. When I went back and read it, it said because of drainage issues, or it just gave enough to me that, that you're going to create, we don't want just trees back, we want the gate of, or the fence of, I guess foliage is the best word, to remain also. So I would like for the, for you to consider that when you're considering your request because it's a big difference to me in how my house can resell later on what my front porch looks to. When I bought in this neighborhood, I was told this was a community that, it's not really, it has a gate, but it is gated by natural areas, and I just like to keep it that way. So that's my one concern. My second concern is also having, making sure that what is built next to us is appropriate for traffic and helping with all these new neighborhoods coming through. I also, also, even though it kind of said we are the detached homes, and then they're, they are the ones attached, I do not know if that necessarily would be good for our neighborhood. It's not considered together, so my concern would be, again, as you have said, in how it looks for resale for my home. So I don't want to be in a neighborhood that because the next neighborhood looks different or odd than any other, that it would actually hurt the resale of my home. So, and I do appreciate being able to give my voice. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Good afternoon. My name's Don Payne. I live at 3416 Cortona Way in Tuscany. And I'm here, first of all, I echo your appreciation of what you guys do. Thankless job, I understand that. First time I've ever been to a hearing before in any city council situation ever. And I knew nothing about this project until I got a notice in the mail and saw the photographs or the drawings, the depiction of what was going to be set right next to us. And my concern is I have an investment in my home, and when I made that investment, I didn't anticipate that there would be something built right beside us that would, in my opinion, divvy the home that I'm in. And earlier, I think we heard the comment that the builder wants to make this affordable to lower the price. Well, when it lowers the price, that also lowers the value of our property. And someone's attracted to property, not because it's in a given area, that's for sure, or location, but it's also the neighborhood they're going to be living in, the attractions of it, and the appeal of the neighborhood. And I also heard for the first time a suggestion of a road to the rear going to Leanna. I've never, is there a plan for a road to be built behind the subdivision on the north side? Is that something that's in the works? I've never heard of that. There's a landscaping company there now, so I don't, I don't know what, how there's going to be egress there when the owner of that property is private property now. So I don't see how there's ingress, egress over to Leanna from the rear. So it seems like to me, for the most part, the egress, ingress in this subdivision is from Thompson Lane and then going through another subdivision to get out, which to me creates unnecessary traffic. Again, I'm not here, traffic's traffic, and Murfreesboro, we all deal with that, and I think that's a given. I don't know that this subdivision is going to, if it's approved, whether it's going to extremely exacerbate that, it's certainly not going to reduce it, but that's, that's another issue. But to me, the look of the homes is not consistent with the other neighborhood, the other homes that are in the area. And all I ask is consider the folks and the investment that we have in our property and how it looks and how it's maintained versus what is proposed to come right beside us. And I think the mention was there's vegetation besides the two that goes along the property line, and that's going to be maintained and kept up. Well, the reason people are asking that to be maintained and kept up is because we don't want to see what's going to be right beside us. It's not appealing. And that's why there's such a concern about let's make sure the vegetation stays in place. And there's a commitment to keep the vegetation in case trees die. How far does that go? Is that three years down the road, still going to replace trees when they die for whatever reason? I doubt it. So that's, that's all the concerns, concerns I have, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Thank you. My name is Mel Simpson. I live at 3406 Keonte Way. I'm a resident of Murfreesboro for many, many years. Couple of issues that I had, and I wish I was able to take the notes, and I got the information just today in regards to the number of exceptions. And when I went through the number of exceptions, I heard quite a few of them. And I didn't really hear any solutions to all those exceptions, and I don't know if that's something that needs to be completed between now and whenever the next meeting may be. So that's the biggest concern I have currently. And that becomes more of a bigger issue if there's already that number of exceptions, as well as the chair, Kathy Jones, here had issues in regards to the changes that were not made based on some of her comments from the previous meeting. Makes me wonder, are we really, truly going to get what we want or need in that area? Because it does bother me. And what really bothers me also is that the Tuscany community is a community of families, single-family homes. It's not a retirement community. And when I think I heard the gentleman say was that the areas that he was looking at building next door to us was going to be more for retired folks that could afford it or not afford it. So I didn't quite understand what that truly meant, but I did hear that. So I just wanted to know if there was something there that really meant something. And I also had the same concern that Don had, was that exit or that street that was proposed that's on the plan there as an ingress, egress going to Leanna Road, there's already currently a homeowner on that property that owns a landscaping company. And I currently know the man, and the man is not in the process of ready to move or sell his property. So I'm not sure what's going on or why that proposed piece of street was there indicating that there's going to be a street going over to Leanna Road. I wake up more times than not every morning. I live two streets over from Thompson Lane. I hear the sirens, I hear the fire, I hear the police, I hear the ambulances every morning. I've got two grandchildren that go to Segal High School. They drive every morning to school. They come up Leanna Road and try to make a left-hand turn just to be able to go to us at high school. It scares me to think how many different accidents because of the amount of traffic. And again, I know this has nothing to do with the Murfreesboro city, but it does have a lot to do with our safety of our children going back and forth to school. And that street is an absolute, it's very difficult to get in and out during school times, also when North Side Baptist Church is letting it in and out. So I see a lot of issues with traffic coming and going through there. And we all know that in the very near future, that Thompson Lane is going to be expanded. So that even scares me even more so, thinking how much more of an issue that's truly going to be. So those are my issues and our concerns, and as a resident in Murfreesboro that happens to currently live in Tuscany, really concerns me to think that we're going to continue to add and add and add more homes up to there. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. My name is Lance Akerd. I live at 3437 Cortona Way. And my fellow neighbors in Tuscany have pretty much said everything that I wanted to say tonight, except I wish that the picture that they showed you of the subdivision had 104 cars parked in it, double-decked and triple-decked, and cars parked in the streets, because that's what it's going to look like. And they can say it's going to be an over-50 crowd that comes in with no children, but those cars must multiply at night, because just look at General's Landing. Go by on a Saturday morning and look down through there. Go to Caroline Farms and look through there on a Saturday morning. It's, it's, it's an eyesore. It's too many cars, too many houses, too dense of a population on the property. So I hope that you consider that, because that does have an adverse effect on our home prices in Tuscany, because it's right next to us, and we just don't need that much density, in my opinion. Not in that particular area, anyway. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Akerd. Who else? Anybody else?
I believe that's us.
That's it. All right. Then we will close the public hearing, and we will take questions and comments from the planning commission, and we will try to answer a few questions that we heard tonight.
Madam Chair, I believe I could address a few things about traffic, if you'd humor me. There were questions about the roadway connection. Let me get to the plan. As you know, that we don't just plan roadway connections when there is a willing developer on the adjacent property. We, we plan roadway connections for five, 10, 15, 20 years down the line. You've seen many instances where we've had street stubs that were stubbed. I can think of one or a couple right now in Riverview that were stubbed probably in the 60s or 70s-
Exactly.
-that we are connecting into now. So when, I think it's Mr. Smith who owns the property on, on Leanna Road, he may not be ready to develop or sell the property for development now, but five, 10, 15, 20 years, that may be the case. And we want to set up this development so that when that is the case, there'll be a road connection made back to Leanna Road. And we think that's good planning. Our, our design guidelines and our subdivision regulations call for us to promote connectivity, and that's what we're trying to do there. So we don't know when that connection would be made, if this development's approved. Could be years and years down the line, but we want to, we want to set this development up in order to make, make that connection when the time comes. The property will also have connectivity, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, back to the east to the developing, developing King's Landing subdivision. And King's Landing is under construction right now, so this development from day one, provided that King's Landing continues- So, so this development from day one, provided that King's Landing continues to move forward and moves forward ahead of this development, it will have two connections, two, two ways in and out from day one, one to the south at Thompson Lane and the other to the east at King's Landing. King's Landing actually has a stub to the north, so that when property to the north develops, there will be connectivity to the north as well. So we're trying to provide connectivity to the north, south, east, and west, as much connectivity as we can at present, as well as opportunities for connectivity in the future. At present, our transportation director, his best estimate for the Thompson Lane bid letting and start date for construction is 2025. The signalization of Leanna Road and Thompson Lane will be a function of that road construction project that the state will be undertaking. So just a few things traffic-related, I wanted to make sure to, to clear up there for you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. I wanted to mention a little bit just about exceptions, and, because this is kind of new for, for us too, or for those of us that have been doing this planning commission thing for a while. Anytime we have a planned development, then the reason it is a planned development is because they do not fit into any of the exact zoning ordinance, zoning classifications that we have. And so what staff has started doing for us just recently is explaining to us, the reason it couldn't be this development is because we've got some setbacks that are smaller than what it would have been otherwise. But in exchange for that, we're getting this, 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 and this, usually more amenities. We get, we get to require landscaping, which in just a regular development, a straight classification, we don't get to tell them what landscaping to put in, we don't get to tell them to plant any trees, you know, those kinds of things. So it's kind of a, in exchange for, but they're letting us know the things that are not allowing it to be a part of that just standard zoning classification. So, and especially for, for us too, when we first had them start listing for us all the exceptions, gosh, it sounded like, what do you mean, we're doing all this? Well, it's what we've really always done. Anytime we had a planned development, there are exceptions, but normally we're getting some offsetting amenities in exchange for that. And it's just, you know, we have to weigh those. You know, yes, we want this, but do we want that? And, and all of this. So I know several of you mentioned the exceptions, and we, we struggle with that a little bit, bit too, but it's nice to have them tell us exactly what they are.
Chair, Lady Jones, if I may, I can add a little color to the exceptions as well. I printed the Tuscany book and brought it with me tonight, and we had six exceptions in there. And except for the difference is, those exceptions apply to every home in that development, whereas if you look at ours, four of ours apply to one building or two dwellings. And so there's a big difference. And then the other one had to do with the road width, and we all wanted the road to be narrower to help with the speed element. And so our exceptions are de minimis compared to next door. Tuscany as comparison, that was the first one that I know of, that we had a single-family detached as an HPR back in, I think we did that in 2014, early 2015. And so that, that in itself was a huge hurdle to overcome and just a new way to approach a project with all those new streets. You know, for, for instance, some of their setbacks, their garages are 20 feet from the back of the sidewalk. Here, even our smallest is 25 from the back of the sidewalk. And so, and I'm not, nothing about Tuscany do I not like. That's why I say "we." I'm very proud of Tuscany. It's our, we did the design. That's why I say "we." We, we tend to take ownership over our projects, good, bad, or indifferent. I'll own it. If it needs to be fixed next time, I'll fix it next time. But if it's good, I'm going to take credit for it. And I think that Tuscany is a good example. And that's why, so I didn't mean any offense to the lady that lives there, just showing a little pride in the work.
Yeah. I agree. I, I drove through Tuscany again this morning, and I, I really liked that project a lot. And it turned out, even, and once it's finished, it's just beautiful, and I, I really like it.
Ms. Jones, if, if I might also, just to provide some context on the, on the tree line?
Yes.
You heard one of our speakers today say that, that her front door faces, faces that adjoining property line. And so I, I pulled up the aerial photo, if we can pull that up. So you see the homes along Keonte Circle. In between their front door is Keonte Circle, and then there's some green space that's in common area. And then, so their front doors face the proposed development. So I thought it might help put into context the interface between the two developments, if you saw the aerial photo.
And we want the tree row to save. I think one of the questions was, how long will that go? It's really during construction. So as long as Mr. Burns is there, he is the builder and the developer here. So what we said at the neighborhood meeting and what we intend in this book, if we need to tweak the language, we're happy to work with staff on that. But what we said at the neighborhood meeting was, if it, if something dies as a result of what we're doing next door, we're going to fix it. And that's what we're trying to portray inside of here. If we need to tweak that language, we're happy to do that. And I, we also talked about the fence at the neighborhood meeting. And essentially, what Mr. Burns said was, as long as it's not a ratty fence, it's going to be a safety issue, some, you know, rusted barbed wire or jagged woven wire, we're happy to leave that up, too. We don't, we don't want Tuscany residents coming over in our backyards any more than they want us coming over to theirs. So our intention is, if it's worth saving, it will be saved. And so if we need to tweak that language, we certainly can. And as far as property values, Mr. Burns is, you know, projecting about, anywhere from about $250 a square foot to about $285 a square foot in this development. I remember when we did Tuscany, my client was thrilled, he was projecting 130, I think, and he was thrilled during construction, he was doing add-ons and upgrades up to $150 or $160 a foot. And so now, they have been the beneficiaries of the market, and that number has raised substantially, I would say. And so nothing that we're going to do next door is going to diminish those. The reason their numbers have went up is because of the construction in our city. And then, I think there was a question about access to retirement community. You know, the same thing that's happened at Tuscany, you know, it's a, it's a product type. You know, the masters are down, there's very little living space upstairs, I believe. I've not been inside any of the homes, but I'm, was my client that built them. The same thing that drew this age group, this demographic to Tuscany, be the same thing that draws them to our project here. And so that will help school time access, it will help all those, the morning peak time access, all those things. And then I think Mr. Blomley addressed the other question I heard, which was about the street stub. If I missed one, I'm happy to.
I, I just want to mention, and then I'm going to be quiet and let everybody else have it there, but just on the tree row.
As well.
And the, you know, I do think when I drove through there this morning, it looked like a lot of that was, you know, it's not necessarily, not correct English, but it's not all trees. It is a lot of just overgrown brush and stuff, and so I think part of that will probably come out in construction, and it will open it up, even though it won't be trees coming down. And so I think just to try to have the same buffer. And it, but also on the Tuscany side, there is already that raised berm that they've built across them. You know, I don't know how you.
I think that we did that berm on Tuscany for the detention pond, at least on the rear, well, the front and the rear, we did that for that reason. Now, we will have a, so Tuscany's detention pond, the rear one, comes onto our property. And so we will take that and put it in a swell or a pipe and run it back up here. It all wants to, I think it crosses generally right in there, if I remember correctly.
I think we need to flip over to your screen, Matt, if you're trying to show us something.
I think the cable department needs to put.
He can't. He just can't do it right now. Technical difficulties. But.
You want a piece of paper?
He's not going to be able to do it. He can't do it.
Okay. So, well.
But the detention pond in the back.
Yeah. So we will have some grading back there, but looking at it, I think it's going to be minimal grading, and that's why we left ourselves the flexibility that if we do kill something, we're just going to replace it. And so until you do a grading plan and get out in the field, it's impossible to guarantee every tree. But that's why we said, if we kill it, we're going to replace it.
What other comments do we have from the planning commission? We can't, can't, can't open the public hearing again, sorry.
So it sounds like the sales price is, what, $335 to $350? Is my math right there?
In my head right now, I'm thinking $399 to $459, the smaller one, the two-bedroom one. It's smaller, so the price per square foot is also more. But the, the larger one, the three-bedroom, will probably be in the mid-fours.
Okay.
Things change monthly in buildings, so.
Okay.
So Brian, while you're up there, or Mr. Burns, excuse me.
Yes.
This is just a thought process, but, you know, you know, there's, seems to be some heartache over the, the, somewhat of the look and design of the buildings themselves.
Okay.
You, you made mention that it's similar to the in-units at General's Landing. I don't know if it would help us, and I know this would delay the project, but would help us to see on paper those similar buildings in, in comparison to these, to have a comfort level of what they would turn out to be. Does that make any sense at all?
No, it makes a lot of sense. The issue, though, is you've got a one-story unit on those ends, and on those units, we had the patios coming out the side. After that project was done, we found out there's some issues when people want to add screen porches and things later, they're too close, and so they can't do it. So working with staff, we fixed these plans where the patios all come out, and we added cover-back porches on the rear side of it. It's, I can send you pictures of those, but the problem is, is it's, you're, you're taking a one-story unit and putting it right beside these big tall units.
I see.
And it just distorts. It's, it's, it's a, I'm really not showing you a true characteristic.
Yeah, there's such a drastic change in the elevation.
It is.
That's what I noticed.
I really think these are looking nice, though. I mean, I've, I know you hear that from every developer, I don't, I don't think anybody's ever come in and said, they're building something ugly. But I don't, I think the pictures just maybe don't do us justice. I think, I even mentioned to Ms. Overwater, the, the trellises and things like that, that makes a drastic difference to a house. When you're doing a Craftsman, the, the shift from lap siding to, you know, board and battening, the big lights that come out over the garage and hang down, things like that is a very important element. We're doing these 100% out-hearty, we're not doing any vinyl soffits and stuff. That gives us the ability to go through there and put, put the cedar corvilles and stuff in there. I've been moving more towards construction, more to a modern design, like I did on Leaf Avenue, that was very popular. Those sold extremely fast. And some of those have lower pitched roofs, that's what gives them that, they're called a prairie, prairie look. And I really think these will turn out and be nicer, maybe, than what the, it shows on paper here.
We look at a lot of stuff on paper up here.
Oh, I know, I do, too, and.
So we know, you know.
Sometimes when I build something, I'm like, wow, I didn't know that. And I designed it. I don't mind trying to work with staff some more on the, on the, on the front designs, if that's what you guys would like me to do. I don't want to drastically change a whole, and if I misrepresented it last time, I apologize, that wasn't my intention. I don't want to drastically change where I have like a, a two-story unit here. Other than maybe like to keep the units the same and keep the consistency in the side the same, maybe a porch or something on the front on some of them, I could do that. But then the, the porch is going to probably protrude out into the front some, but I don't, I don't think that matters on setbacks on porches, does it, Matthew?
I believe they can go up to five feet into the setback.
Okay, most of these porches would be five feet. So I can, I can try to come up with an elevation for you for a porch, to put a front porch on some of them. And then a lot of it's just changing the, you know, I've got four designs, changing around, putting this, this design here with this one, and this one with this one, and you, you mix them up there. That's what gives you your, your different looks. And I, I guess I didn't have enough time to really try to, to come up with every single elevation you could probably do, that I was just trying to give some examples.
Yeah, I think that's probably, that may be part of the issue, is just trying to get to it fast enough to hit the cycle, instead of taking the time and then making it actually look different. So I think if you can take it back and make a, a different-looking elevation so that it doesn't look so much the same.
Okay.
That'll help us a lot.
So I want to be clear, I'll make sure I know what you want this time. I think I, I may misspoke last time, so I'm going to come up with maybe another elevation to put in with these three elevations, and then.
Multiple, but you don't have three elevations right now.
I've got, easily got three elevations. I, I think I got three elevations. I've been out of it all week, I've been sick, so I think I counted right.
Do shutters and paint colors change elevations?
No, but I added false cables on the front, I added dormers on the front of some of them. I did more than just put shutters and stuff on there. I'll, maybe that's what I need to do, maybe I need to put them all side by side where it's easy to, to see. I think when you're flipping through the pages, they all start looking the same. Maybe I, I can put them side by side and maybe have a better way of presenting you the different elevation changes.
I'm not going to be able to approve personally, me, my one vote, this project like it is.
Okay. What is it you're looking for, Ms. Jones, so I can try to, I'm trying to get in your head a little bit.
Multiple elevations that look like different elevations to me. I mean, and again.
I think if you get.
If it was my first week on planning commission, maybe I don't know what an elevation is yet, but I, you know, we're used to seeing a lot of different elevations.
Okay.
I, I don't, I.
Let me go back to.
And the one thing you should know from, I can't tell you. I know it, I know what I like when I see it. And normally, when I kind of give you all the things I don't like, y'all know how to make it look like we do like it. And that's what we need.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm not good at that part.
You sound like my wife.
Not that I'm good at any of it, but.
I will do what I can.
Need some help. But you may have four of the votes up here that are all just fine with it, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I may, I, I don't claim to be an architecture expert. It didn't, I didn't love it the first time, but I didn't hate it. And this time, I do think it looks better, and I do like the changes to it. I agree that they're not necessarily elevation changes, but I'm also one for minimalism, for what it's worth, and this is a pretty compact development with 52 units, and I would almost hate to see like a crazy game of Tetris trying to fit houses in there. These are high sales prices, and it's adequately parked, it's actually more than adequately parked. And as a planning commissioner, we all know that's what I care about, and it's a walkable community. I, I really don't claim to be an expert on what the market wants when it turn, when it comes to designing aesthetic. I tend to trust the, the engineers and the developer with that, but I, I like it. I'm sorry, I, but I support it.
And sometimes I just like doing things a little different. I'm not the normal.
Yeah, I mean, I like different, I want different.
So I don't like this, I mean, I love, I mean, Decker and Belt admitted this project, everybody calls it the Decker and Belt, like Matthew said, myself included. When people ask me, oh, Decker and Belt project. I'm basically advertising for them. But I, I want something that looks different what Decker and Belt does. The stuff they did was very cutting-edge for 1999 and 2005. Today, it would be boring and not very popular with the, with people. And I think when you do everything the same, it gets very boring, you end up with a town of everything being the same. And I think us as developers and builders' responsibility is to kind of change things up occasionally.
I'd just do.
I mean, I'm, I would, my first instinct when I bought this was do townhomes. My second instinct was do something super modern, like flat roofs, and, but I knew Mr. McKnight would have a heart attack, so I did not even bring that up.
Well, we want to see that somewhere, but this, this wouldn't.
Not right here, right? It's not appropriate for this spot.
Yeah. Find the right place.
Like Mr. Taylor said, we thought this was. Like Mr. Taylor said, we thought this was, it's not townhomes. It's not single-family. It's a nice break. We're basically the same exact density as Tuscany is.
And there are, I won't say how many elevations. I count at least two. But I agree, it would help if we could see all of them side by side. But I remember that distinctly, because today, when I was looking at it, one of the elevations from the front was very symmetrical. There was a pitch in the middle, and then a pitch on either side, and I thought, oh, it's.
That was our third elevation, yes.
Yeah, it's so symmetrical, and I love that. And the other one was not symmetrical, and that's just what my eyes went to.
Mr. McKnight designed that in here, so.
Oh. Good job, Greg.
He drove the ink pen and gave it to me, so. That's the problem. Sometimes you're trying to make everybody happy, and sometimes, you know, it's hard to, especially with houses. I build houses where the husband and the wife don't even agree. So trying to make city council happy and the planning commission happy and make everybody happy sometimes, it's a hard task.
That's the challenge of wanting to be different.
Yeah, so.
I think you can get there. I have confidence in that. I have confidence in that you will build a good product. I think we're just not quite there yet, as far as the difference in the elevations. I think, I hope that you understand that for us, elevation is probably not accessories. It's a true, a little bit different look.
Okay. I want to keep the same units. So really, the only way to, on something like this, to change the elevations, like I said, is add porches and maybe add some gables. Maybe make some on hip roofs. But I didn't want to get, I really didn't want to get real busy down through there, like Ms. Overwater said. I didn't want it to be 50 different homes. I want it to be very consistent.
A hip roof might be a good, on those corners that I'm talking about, that you're looking at.
I could do some Dutch, the little Dutch roofs, you know, where it's like a partial hip on down. I can do some stuff, like I just had a week to do it, and this is what I come up with. So I can, we can go back to the drawing board back tomorrow and play with some of them, and come up with a couple more.
Is this something staff can work on? Do we want to not have a vote then, just so I'm clear?
Well, you have several things that you can do. You can approve as-is. You can deny as-is. You can defer so that staff can continue to work with the applicant on these issues that have been raised. And then we can bring it back to you to review those changes at a future planning commission meeting.
It would take me about two weeks to do that. That's what I really need. If it had been fall break this week, I could have you, I could have you some more elevations. To have them in color and everything, that's, sometimes that's where the delay happens. I can get the black and white drawings done in like a few days, but to get them, the pretty elevations is what takes time.
So would that, would we be a fair deferring, or are we drawing?
No, I think, from what I'm hearing, I think the deferral would probably be the, would probably be the more appropriate option, rather than a withdrawal. I think withdrawing it would be, yeah, and that, and.
Would we have to have another public hearing?
As long as the changes were not substantial, then no, there would not be a need for a public hearing. I think modifying some elevations, you know, addressing the concerns that were raised today, as long as the revisions don't result in a substantial change to the plan, I don't think another public hearing would be required. And if you do defer, I would recommend that you just defer it indefinitely, so that we don't defer it to the day meeting. And if we don't get the revisions back in time for the agenda publication, that we won't be in a pinch to get that on the agenda when we don't have what we need.
I'm, whatever you guys want to do. Whatever's easiest on the staff, and whatever's easiest on you guys. It takes, like I said, it's about a two-week process for me. And I want you guys to like what you're approving. I don't want you to, or I really don't.
Not, I'll move for a deferral indefinitely.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And thank you all for coming out tonight.
Give Ms. Green some more work to do when she gets back.
More at a future meeting, so. All right. Any other business we need tonight?
One thing, Ms. Jones, that I wanted to mention, we will be getting to y'all soon, an updated training log. And we've got a little bit less than three months left in the year to make sure we get all of our hours. And so we'll be getting that out to you here real soon.
Okay. Very good. All right. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.